Yes, Captain.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. No waiting, it's exciting.
Well, thank you for waiting.
That's okay. They've got interesting issues at all times, especially now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we're here to talk about budget, right? Are you all ready to go on that?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes. As you know, I like to do this every year, just to sort of give you an update on what my thinking is and what we're doing. So, just generally, and I have, I believe you have a copy of the narrative, which is kind of the most important part in terms of my explainer, explainer piece. But the general thoughts that I wanted to highlight for you is, are that we do try to present our general revenue requests in context of the whole budget. So, we have a couple of sequestered funds with tax certificates and with our de-liquor tax collection fund. So, it kind of gives you a little bit of context for what we're asking for. But I wanted to highlight that overall, based on the way we ran these numbers, we should see from our office's activities, an increase in the general revenue fund of fifty-five thousand-ish and a decrease in our DTAC fund of around forty-seven thousand. So, we try to bias as much of our work as we can in a way that's responsible. So, I just wanted to highlight that. I do have a little bit of a question as to where we are in the process. So, I got some data from Todd for projection level one in July. And that looked to reflect everything that I'd asked for in my initial budget. So, I believe the tax budget is projection level two. Are we, where are we at in the process? Is that what we're talking about today? You're still making decisions about tax budget?
Yeah, we're still, oh, the tax budget.
Yeah.
That was done.
Okay, 'cause that's, I tried to print that today.
We're now going on to the general.
I've got zeros on projection level two in MUNIS. So, I'm just pointing that out, 'cause this is kind of the best place for us to find things and kind of compare line by line. I know that you have, I think there's a top line just for my whole, whole piece that you've seen. So, I'm sharing that, 'cause it's helpful for me to be able to kind of piece by piece contextualize what I'm looking at. So, I don't have that.
Todd, did Brad get a copy of this, what he gave us today? Does he have this?
Does he have?
That's what they entered. There's, I mean, the tax budget is the tax budget. It has not changed and there will not be anything else until you do the appropriation budget.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And then in the second.
Yeah, okay.
And there is the line in between.
That's good enough.
Okay.
So, and then I just, I-
What would you need, Brad?
Well, so, you know, and again, I don't think that that's in MUNIS, that piece. So-
Which piece?
The, the, the one cheater that you had there.
It should be in MUNIS, this is munisus, perhaps, isn't it?
That's how it was entered, in preparation of the tax budget, yes.
Is that in MUNIS, this piece?
That's the level one piece, yes.
Okay. And what's, what's, I'm just confused.
You're looking at level two.
I guess about level two. Yeah, which is tax budget or MUNIS?
That's once we-
There is the, the level, we haven't used levels in six years. The level two is no longer the tax budget. We have the tax budget that was passed based on the level one information. I don't believe that, the commissioners made any changes.
It's just that I, I don't have anything to refer to, I guess, past what I submit on a line by line basis, which I mentioned last year. So, I'm just sharing that that would be helpful. Another thing that was-
What would be helpful, Brad, I'm sorry?
Being able to have, having it in MUNIS, using level two, I guess, for lack of a better.
What, I'm just not as familiar with MUNIS. So, you ha, you have the information that you submitted available to you.
Right. Right. That I've got.
What don't you have?
And Todd sent me in July, the projection level one, which I think reflects basically just what I put in, which is what he said. But there is a second level. I, I guess I just don't know where the thinking is, so there's nothing much to respond to. Everything is just what came, it just all carried over. So, either everything I recommended is now in the budget and probably moving forward, or it's not. But I don't have any way to know that really.
I think it's, from my standpoint and Todd and Brad, correct me if I'm not giving this correctly. There's the 2020 tax budget, which is like your budget request. And then we compare that to the current appropriation.
Generally, I think there's a step in between there, where Todd makes recommendations based, so he, he collects, this is just what I understand how this process flows. So, he collects the information.
That's today, right?
Makes a recommendation. And then you-
Yeah, you guys are coming in just today.
Yeah. So, and, and I point this, so that's, that's part of a, a, there's just an information disconnect. So, I'm not really sure how the process flows. One thing that used to be in the letter that came out about doing budget entry was a timeline. So, there was a calendar included at one juncture that sort of said, here's, here are the dates in the process. So, even something like that might be helpful going forward, just so the rest of us have a little bit of a sense of what that is. So-
Help us out through that.
For what that's worth, I think that would be good, if we could do that.
I thought we had it. Is that because you feel like you're caught off guard by what eventually, like you don't have enough notice of what comes up?
There's a little mystery to the process. Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, again, I know what the deadline is to submit my budget. I do that. You then give notice that if you want to come talk to you, sign up for that, that's that. But then after that point.
The next, what's the next thing?
Yeah. What's the next step? When are, when are things final?
Well, we-
Just having that in front of us.
Well, when we're having these meetings.
It's good.
And then the recommended budgets are reviewed by us, like in late September, early October. Recommended budgets are then sent to the departments that we recommend. Then in late October, early November, budget hearings are held with those not satisfied with our proposed budget. Mid-November.
Cyber hearings.
Yeah. Mid-November, the final budget is prepared with the commissioners. And then early to mid-December, passages of next year's appropriation budget.
So, we have a budget timeline that we got a long time ago.
Yeah.
I'll make Brad have one of them.
But we don't have that, so that's-
We can share that with you.
You know, and at one juncture, that came out with the letter from, from the budget office.
Yeah. This is, Todd, you gave this to us a long time ago, but I mean, well, probably this year, probably when the tax budget came out.
Yeah. It's helpful for planning, that's all.
Maybe you could share that with Brad, if that's-
But I think getting it with the letter that says-
Could you tell me, do you want to want a memo coming from the board?
Oh, coming, do you want us to do a-
Well, do you want it just to go to Brad, or do you want a memo? I mean, he's saying nobody knows. Do you want a memo going all under officials, I think you want to say?
Yeah, maybe we should do a memo with all, to all elected officials, just to, to remind them what our timeline is.
Yeah. And timing wise, again, I think that can come with the letter that comes whenever we got that April May.
Okay.
That says, here's the process, just 'cause I think that's useful for all of us to contextualize.
Well, that's a good suggestion.
You did not know your schedule. Typically, that is in the letter. You did not know your schedule back then, that's why it was not included in that letter.
Yeah, and that's why there's a lot of me there.
Why didn't we know our schedule? What do we, what was up in the air?
I don't know, but we did not have the full schedule when that letter was sent out.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't mean to open the can of worms on that, I just think, process flow wise, I think that would be good for-
Well, you're-
No, I don't think that's-
That's good.
Good for the rest of us and answer some questions that are out there, so.
That's always helpful for us, 'cause we get asked those things, but like I said, I have a cheater sheet, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyways, that's, that's just kind of broad, broad strokes. The, the actual request highlights I wanted to bring your attention to. Biggest year-over-year change in what we submitted is obviously salaries. That was based on the wage study and also Bureau of Labor Statistics data. So, I do mention in the narrative there that we're playing this with the cost of that between the general revenue fund and our sequestered funds. Just offset some of it. So-
So, it's one point four five between, like-
It's, it's, it's a little confusing. It's about fourteen thousand overall. So, five point two percent, it will be a five point two percent in our GRF line, a four point six percent in our DTAC line, and an eight point eight percent in our tax certificates salary line. I hesitate to use those numbers a little bit, because eight point eight percent sounds like a lot. It's like a thousand dollars. So, it's not that much of a change, but, but that's the way it breaks down. And that's, that's in the narrative too, so you can look at that at some juncture. But basically, the goal there is to get our people to the median. We're not trying to exceed that, but then we did have a couple of people who were lagging in a, in a couple of cases pretty significantly. So, we want to get them up to where they are competitive market-wise, so.
Yeah, 'cause you know, when the study came, we were just trying to get people within the zone at the beginning point. And that's why we did over three years for anyone that was not even on the, the minimum amount is, was our goal. So, but you're asking to, to try to move them to the mid, to the midpoint.
To the mid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
And I have that broken down. It's a little bit difficult to make sense of it if you weren't in the process of preparing it. But Dennis and I did do a employee-by-employee comparison. So, for what's that's worth.
That's okay, we have it, we have it in our book, we have all of that.
Yeah, you got that stuff. So, okay, so that's, that's the big change. And then the other thing I'd point out, and since it's been in every budget I've ever done, I'm still committed to doing some kind of financial wellness incentive something for employees. I think that's a good thing for us to target. It's in conversations with Todd and with HR and with, you know, banking providers and other people who work in that space. It's just, that's a difficult thing to do generally, and especially for public sector employers. So, I think probably the best push at this point is to encourage people to attend the Financial Wellness Fair. So, it's going to be on the sixteenth of November, ten AM to two PM at Ravenna High School. I plan to be sha, I plan to share that with the blast emails and other things as we get closer. But I wanted to let you know that's still on my radar, and that's for now, the best solution I've got. So, until we do something more comprehensive, that's at least something, so. So, that's it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about the rest of it, or?
No.
Well, thanks to you, Brad.
Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for taking the time.
Sure, thanks for coming in. Oh, thank you. Sorry, one guy canceled for public comments.
Right.
You know, since it's not quite eleven o'clock, you want to take Todd, I think you only need fifteen minutes, right, Todd?
Um, I do, but do you want to talk first about the letter that you're going to sign out to the, to the electives?
Yes.
You have budget hearings all the way through the twelfth, do they go later than that anymore?
Uh, I think that might be a major issue. I thought the sheriff was later.
I think he's the one.
Yeah, he's the one.
Yeah, the sheriff was later.
He was good.
Is he the only one that's after the twelfth?
You know, my computer's still on. A little slow. Out in the cloud.
The question, the, the crux is when are you going to deliver the recommended budgets?
I just didn't remember what our schedule was.
We need a couple of weeks to talk.
Right. Yeah, because-
We're already into late September.
Uh-huh.
So, I just want to make sure that you're still comfortable trying to meet that schedule if you're going to send it in.
Well, it says, Todd, that we, according to this timeline, in late September, or like, recommended budgets are sent to the departments. So, if it's maybe mid-October, instead of early October, since I'm the sheriff, okay.
It doesn't matter.
Could we all have that again? Could you, could you make us another copy of that, Todd?
The timeline?
I don't know where mine is.
Well, we're going to get the memo too, so.
Why don't, it's hard for me to suggest what to do. Not looking at anything.
I think Todd's just concerned that we have the time to actually discuss it before we release it.
Yeah.
Everybody's comfortable with it.
Yeah, Todd, I guess we look a little more to you for the directive as far as the timeline, seeing that the sheriff, is the sheriff the last budget one?
Yes, from nineteen, nineteen.
It'll be the last meeting.
Yes.
We have never prepared a proposed budget in an open session. I don't know how much time that's going to take. But we'll do it.
What do you mean? I, I, I'm not following you.
My understanding is this year, you guys want to go through each department and discuss the recommended budget. And you'll decide whether you're providing the things that they've requested or not, all those type of things. And we're going to do that for each department, each elected office.
If they want.
We've never really done that.
Don't we usually just discuss the ones that have come up and want changes?
Some of them don't have much, you give us a cheater sheet of what-
But you wanted it different this year. At least that was my understanding.
Oh.
And that's why we didn't have the schedules ready, because we were trying a different process. So that it would be more open, so that people like Brad wouldn't be confused as to what's going on. That they would have eighteen minutes.
Well, he said he brought that up last year, though. So, it's like this year is no different than last year, and he said he brought it up last year. Did I miss that?
No.
I'm not sure what the question is. All I know is at the beginning of this year, you told me you wanted to do it differently.
Oh, I thought the difference was, and I think Vicky brought it up-
I'm happy to do it however you want.
Last year was, we gave them two opportunities to come in and discuss their budget. Like, this is the second round for some of them, to come in, or what's-
This is the first, right?
Or is this the first?
No, because we had people come-
To come, to actually physically come, this is the first.
Okay.
They put in their requests and sent you their narratives back in May with the tax budget. So, that, that was really their first opportunity to present to you.
This is the first meeting.
This is the first time to do it live and make adjustments to there. The next step is that you are going to come up with what you, we call it our recommended budget or our proposed budget.
But am I confused to think that we had people in May come to us? For the tax budget, for some reason, I, I had it in my head.
I don't believe we held sessions. Some people may have requested to come and talk to you.
Yeah, I think some just come in. So, this is their first request, and then once we kick back after we've discussed it, our proposal back to them, if they disagree, then they can come a second time.
Then they come to them. Right.
Okay. So, and how is that different than what we've done in the past?
I guess my understanding, for example, was Brad's budget. We're going to hold an open session over whether you give the nine thousand dollars to line three, one, one, two, zero, zero. Whether you give the extra thousand that you requested. We're going to have an open session, you deciding yes or no, even for the proposed. We have never done that. On that level of detail with that amount of time involved.
My sense was that you, that we would prepare our proposed budget and then release that.
Yes, it's the preparation of that that I'm talking about.
That's what's different, is what you're saying.
That's what you're saying. You say an open session is different.
My understanding was you wanted me to bring their requests in an open session. We would go through and decide yes, no, yes, no, to these requests. So that the elected officials would be able to see that record of, it was actually the commissioners who thought about this and said yes or no. And all I'm telling you is we've never taken that kind of time through open session process, meaning having to schedule meetings and whatnot, to, to prepare a proposed budget.
So, how have we normally done it?
Which, it will probably take us two, two weeks of-
Usually, you would just probably prepare it, right?
You would just do it, right?
And that is what has been brought as an issue. And this was our attempt to correct it.
Okay. So, should we stay on task with that? I'm assuming, if that's what we agreed to? I mean, it takes a little more time, 'cause you're saying we have to meet for proposals and then we're going to meet again.
My understanding, that's what you wanted to do. I'll do budgets any way you want. My understanding, that was what you wanted to do.
I'm at the place where I've been here for, you know, this is my eighth month. So, I just, I may have said something in March, but now that we're going, I mean, this is my first budget process. That seems like it could take a very long time, and we're already behind, so.
Well, I, well, that's why.
So, no, we, we should probably, at this point, because we are behind, probably just stick to the original game plan.
Well, that, that was the original game plan for this year, so I have a lot of discussions I have not done with you to get your general feel as to what you want done in the proposed.
So, what is your recommendation, Todd?
So, those, those discussions are faster, but we have not discussed at all, for example, the COLA increases.
No.
You have not discussed with me, I don't know if you've discussed it with Janet, your merit pay plan and how that's going to be rolled out to the different departments and elected officials.
I haven't discussed anything, Janet.
We haven't talked about, you know, the continuation of the SWAG study, where we did the three years, the request earlier. And this year to go to one year, the board had thought about trying to finish it next year. I don't know if that's still your plan or not. So, there are a lot of things, at least on that regard, we needed to talk about before I came in to begin the prepare, the document.
So, what would be your recommendation at this point in time for us?
If you don't want to do individual departments in live session, then at very least, we're going to need a few hours for me to get your priorities.
Okay.
So that I can-
We can meet on like a Tuesday and have like a work session, is that what you're thinking?
Make a call based on your priorities. However you want to do it.
Like, I think that would be- I think that would, yeah. And that's an open session?
Well, that would still be an open session, but what you'll be giving me is rather than yes and no to every line within everyone's budget, you'll be giving me guides. I mean, last year, one of the guides was no new employees. So, what I did was write it, when you went through every proposal that asked for a new employee and took that money out. You indicated that you only wanted to give X percent, so I went through and took everybody, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I thought you had like-
Like, you provide generic guidelines and then I go and do the editing.
Just, could you have some specific ones, like, oh, I, I thought that this department's request made sense?
And typically, we do do that, that that's, we sit down and you guys say, well, you know, did you make sure you included?
Yeah. Like the cybersecurity stuff, like, I think it would be, like, do it bomb.
You know, someone brought that up. Well, right now, we don't have our numbers for that, but yeah, we definitely have to get that in.
Right. As, as an example, I mean, that would be something we bring up in that discussion.
Yeah. Address separately, yeah, right, right.
So, so what I'm hearing from you, Todd, is you're going to go through each of these proposals that people are, are bringing in to us and reviewing with us. And, and like, and meet with us so that you can present this to us to review and then also discuss other issues to give you some guidance to help with that selection. Is that correct, or?
That's typically what we've done, yes.
Okay, well, then let's stick with the plan, that plan then. 'Cause it sounds like we, we're getting this thing kicked in the can too far down the road, and we're going to be, December will be here before you know it.
I think that makes sense too, and I, if, if I suggested otherwise through not knowing the process, I apologize. If it, if, I don't even know, but I'll say that I think too, if we did it line by line like that, there's so many things that are just-
Oh, no.
Clear, yes, that, that it would take so much time, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think that if we go the way that we're talking about.
Stick with how we originally did it. And you come-
You still have ample opportunity for discussion and changes and transparency, so.
Sure.
I'm fine with that, it sounds like there's consensus.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, so we need to-
So, does the timeline that you drafted reflect a-
Or works like this now, right?
We could, you know, we could probably still make proposed budgets by early October.
Okay. Well, let's go with that then. Sooner we-
We still want to see the-
We may need a couple of workdays in there.
What?
You still want to see the people that scheduled?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. 'Cause we're not going to, we shouldn't probably meet until after we met with the sheriff, right?
Well, that was the idea.
Yeah, after the last hearing.
Although some other generic things we could start talking about now, for example, your COLA, your merit pay and all those type of things.
Do you want to just start putting yourself on our agenda each Thursday and have a topic so we can start addressing those now? So that, 'cause that will help you give us our cheater sheet and your recommendations.
We also could have notes from what we've already seen and share them with you at that point. You know, like, so to, today, after today, we will have heard from three departments. So, the next time we talk to you, we could share some feedback if we had it at that time about what we, what we've heard so far. Does that make sense?
Well, you sit in all the meetings. He sits in on all the, the meetings that people come into as the budget person.
But I don't know if he has a sense of what we think after that, thirty minutes.
Your thoughts.
Okay.
Especially since it's mostly them presenting.
Yeah. Well, that's where, if we put you on our calendar, put you on on Thursday, every week, we can start going over it. Will that help you then, Todd, so you can have some?
I'm, how are you guys working? I don't-
Well, I'm just asking, because it sounds like we need to, to start doing it now.
I mean, we have a lot of issues that are up in the air, buildings, we have not discussed all year. In fact, we have discussed it since the middle class.
And I understand that we're way behind, but-
I mean, there's a lot of topics too, though, a little bit.
Yeah.
Does that not come up during Joanne's presentation?
No.
I would have thought it would.
She would have been, she'll be involved in it, but she has to be here.
Ultimately, maintenance does what you guys want.
Yeah.
Does it come up during individual departments as well? I mean, in a piecemeal format, there needs, like, the Board of Elections had a-
In terms of buildings, the only- And that's rare.
Facilities.
Yeah, that's rare, and that was because we specifically asked them to prepare that list. Vic does a very good job of keeping this building maintained. Every other building, we have to go and search for the items, especially when you talk about riddle and some of those where there really isn't anyone, yeah.
Have you noticed that Todd's building was on?
Yeah.
It wasn't mentioned, but it was on there.
Right, right.
But some of it too, is even whether, there's always been a question of how much do you want to put in the riddle? How much do you want to put in the Amex building? How much do you want to put in some of these other facilities? Of course, the multiple questions down-
You know what I want to put in riddle?
Station thirty.
Nothing. Now, you know what I want to put in riddle? A for-sale sign.
Well, that's, and that's been talked about, but then, and we've held off on some-
Then, where do we put all the people in probation and, and?
We've held off on expenses because of that. On the other hand, we keep saying that not doing it, and in the meantime, you have employees in there.
Just cost us more money.
Those are some of the issues that we need to get back on track with in terms of the five year.
Well, we need you to help us get back on track, keep it on our radar.
We will do that.
So that we, and we'll just start planning to have meetings with you on Thursdays to discuss certain topics.
Is there anything else you want to discuss with us, Todd?
I did want to discuss the airport, do you want to do the airport?
Oh, no, you know what, it's what was commented out, and we'll discuss the airport.
Okay, Mo, would you come on up for her?
Oh, yes, I would. Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning. You have a young man with you this morning.
Yeah, this is, I'm calling Benny, Kel. He's a photographer, cinematographer.
Oh.
We're shooting a movie, we're shooting a movie called The Movie Mo.
The Movie Mo, is that after your book?
Mo. No, this is after my, well, my work that I do here. My book is basically after my life.
Oh, yeah, that's what I-
This movie is basically on what I do for the young men in the community. All the years I've been working for them, they don't know what I do. They don't, they don't come to the meetings. I just have girlfriends used to come, but that's not good enough. I need these young men to organize, they play basketball every Sunday. So, I did this thing called The Big Mo Blowdown.
Wow.
You know, you ever heard of somebody blowing down?
Blowing your knee?
No. What I'm doing right now to the commissioners, you didn't know I was coming, right?
No.
I just, that's a blowdown, I just blew down on you.
Okay.
That, this is what the blow, so I blew down on the young men, they're playing basketball. And I talked to Mark Huzon, and he wanted to give us some land. I want to build a homeless shelter for the young men. And the gardens, I'm attaching garden, Walapines, they're subterranean, year-round gardens that you grow full and make deals with Giant Negro Walmart, and so, like, like Frank Hairston's brother there. And, you know, I've been doing it for a long time, but like I was saying to Ms. Smith over there, the, uh, the news reporters don't report on what I do in the community, all the hard work I do and all the things, the meetings we have and the hard work I leave with sometimes. And so, the young men who I'm fighting for don't think anyone's fighting for them. They don't know there's somebody out here fighting and getting beat up for you. So, I'm inviting them through this movie to see that, I talk to you guys all the time.
Yeah.
And I thank you for the work you, you know, I don't even, I don't know, her, she hasn't done anything for me yet, but maybe in the future. But Sabrina, Kathleen, man, y'all been helping me for, um, Vicky, I mean, Kathleen's gone, but you've been helping me.
Kathleen.
It's a new Kathleen.
A new, a different Kathleen. Yeah, but you've been helping me. And these are young voters, these aren't babies. These young men are twenties, twenty-five, thirty years old, these are working men.
So, so tell me a little bit more with what you and Mark are doing with the homeless shelter.
These young men, they got jobs. They're voting, but they're living on mama's couch in the back room of a friend's house, or they're shacking together in substandard conditions. What I know is available for them through them coming together and coming to meetings like this and demanding what they deserve, demanding some kind of attention, 'cause all the girls get it. Mark Huzon give it to the community centers, and the community centers give it to the little girls. R.L. and Frank Hairston, oh, they don't give it to nobody. They don't know, no, but you know R.L.? You know Frank Hairston? But the news reporters report in the newspaper, like, R.L. and Frank Hairston is doing so much for the community and they're really doing nothing. And the news reporter don't report on the people that's doing this stuff. So, I need these young men to see where the commission, commissioners' offices at. So, this is the movie mode, we're going to do a YouTube, it's going to be real big, you know. I'm a, I used to have a record deal in Hollywood, I used to be a celebrity for a long time. My last record deal was in two thousand and four with Atlantic Records. So, we're going to take this to Hollywood, and we're going to try to get the young men in America to start standing up. 'Cause they, it's like they gave up, even he was saying, most of them depressed. I mean, they looking down, I'm like, I'm up, I'm fresh, I'm dressed, I got a tie on, I'm feeling good about myself. I mean, they looking down, I'm like, I'm up, I'm fresh, I'm dressed, I got a tie on, I feel like good about myself. They coming out in jeans and tennis shoes and hoodies every day, some, some even just come out in pajama pants, be like, what's this? You know, working, you ask them to lift a brick, they're like, no, I'm gonna get a job. And construction is important, gardening, farming, these things, trade, these are what is important.
Trades.
That's what I do every day, I'm working at the, we just bought the church, four twenty prospect. I've learned how to do electrician, we did a whole electrical in the church, I've been building the bricks, we put the, I learned everything, I'm gonna take my electrical license. I took the general contractor's exam and only missed one question. I said, wow, I said, well, if these young men can be a witness to that, you can tell everybody anything, talk, 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 and nobody listen. What I'm doing now, I'm showing them action and proof, this, you can, you can put on a suit and a tie too, and some suspenders, you might think, y'all gonna tell me, no, but actually, can you help me with Mark gonna do with the homeless shelter? He's gonna give me the land, and what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna plow it out, and it costs seventy-eight thousand dollars for the shelter. So for just, just to build the shelter up. But I will make the money back on the gardens, on the Walapines, year runs on eighteen by forty square feet with tomatoes, that'd, that'd yield nine hundred tons of tomatoes. It's two thousand pounds in every ton. Tomatoes go for two dollars a pound. That's three point six million dollars every year. Tax money to the city. And these young men out the streets, no more heroin crack dealing, no more standing up, girls pregnant with no daddies. No more of that, welfare gotta pay for extra babies, that's more money coming out the city. This will help, it's just a proposal, you know, I gave the business plan to Mark already.
I was just gonna ask you, if you had a business plan and someone helped you with it.
Yeah, Mark has the business plan.
So he's reviewing it, taking a look at it?
Yeah. So he's been looking at, he, he gave me on camera, he said he's gonna give us the land, so we got a, a verbal agreement already on-
Well, that's a big part.
Yeah, get the land.
People have dreams, but then they have no location, so the land is always a good thing.
No location, yeah. That's the thing.
Get a site.
Where is the land?
It's in the Gobin Park.
Okay.
It was, it was total six parcels, and happened, four of them is next to each other. And you know, you need three parcels to build a house.
Yeah.
So what we'll do, we'll use the two to build the structure for the homeless situation and let the young men build it themselves. We would dig the ditch, we would train, we would go to general contractor school, and they will build it themselves as part of the program. And the city benefits, because now these young men have jobs. Now, these young men are not out getting girls pregnant or getting them on drugs, cause they bored and just wanna drink, have a drink with me, then drunk, and now they're drinking. That's what's going on. That is actually, my son is one, don't you know my son? Yeah, my son is their age, I have a daughter with two babies and two abortions. What are you talking about, this is serious to me. So when I leave here and y'all be like, no, or nonchalant, it really, really hurts. When the newspapers don't report on the good work I'm doing and I see the despair in my community and they talking about R L and Frank who ain't doing nothing, that really, really hurts, the anger, but I know God said be angry, sin not. So I mean not to bring offense to anyone, cause that's a sin. But I wanna thank you, and if you can help me talk to Mark.
Okay. Well, keep us updated on that, I'd be interested to hear more on your, your shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, have a good day.
All right, nice weekend.
Young man.
Young man, thanks for coming. Okay, you too.
Nadine, wanna come to the airport?
Sure. Yeah, I didn't bring my airport stuff in here, but I know exactly what it's about, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to meet beforehand, um, cause I assume they're gonna wanna answer there or shortly after, um, you know, there are fifty-two thousand is the repairs to-
Todd, I don't think I have a choice in this, I really don't.
Well, and I don't think, I mean, you're, the only question is whether you wanna loan the money or whether you wanna give it outright or whether you want to try and contract, use the county to contract the work yourself.
Well, we can call it a loan, but I'm not sure.
It's not gonna get paid, I think we should just give it to them, we-
The benefit of keeping it as a loan as you have, and I've actually asked Homer, um, started, started with, um,
Lucas. Chris Gilmore.
Chris Gilmore. But, uh, we're working to see if the FAA will count forgiveness of a loan as a match.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so it's nice to possibly keep that in your bank pocket in case they ever decide to accept that.
Okay. Okay. Well, then let's do it that way then.
At that point, you could do it, or, um, you could give it, the question is whether we give it now, that would be counted as next year's match or something. Uh, those are issues to look into, that, but those are your possibilities, but yes, I think you're gonna be fifty-two thousand later coming out of here.
Yeah.
There's not much question there.
Fifty-two thousand later?
Well, they're, from what I read in the proposal, they're asking for the full amount.
Oh, the full amount?
Originally, they said they had some money, but that does not come up against us. The other question is whether you want to give the money contingent on them giving you any settlement back or whether you're gonna give them the money and let them keep any settlement that comes as a result of this.
Yeah, because they, they are so trying to work with the insurance.
We don't need answers today, we're definitely gonna need to start thinking about-
Well, he's coming in next week.
I think it's two weeks, I think he's coming-
Are they two weeks?
Yeah, we have next Thursday, it's the Thursday after that.
This happened in May, I mean, I, this is a big thing, I mean, I met with Dick Bonner, he's not gonna be able to have a mobile tank there forever.
I was thinking fifty-seven, but I, I must be the home, it might be fifty-two, Todd, like, I know it's fifty-seven.
And I'm sure that will change, you know, when actuality comes out.
Yeah.
Oh, it is fifty-seven, fifty-seven, you're right, yeah.
Todd, can we see that?
I have a copy.
Remember, I have notes, but-
But I just wanted to get you thinking about how you intend to provide the money.
Well, when we take it out of Commissioner's other-
I mean, yeah, this'll be out of your cash balance, I mean, it's-
What the funds come from. Yeah. Well, then, I think we should do it as a loan, if there's any way that they could eventually maybe use it as match funds or something.
Now, how would that affect if we take money back when they, when they, if they get monies, which I think they'll get some, I doubt if they'll get all. But I think they'll get some, how would that affect the match part of this if it's a loan, I mean?
Well, so that's, so in your loan, you have two options, you could make it regular payments over ten years.
Yeah.
Or you could make the loan contingent on, if they get money back, that comes first, and then the rest of the loan will be probated out, depending on what the balance is. Uh, I mean, those are your two options, write that way.
But what I'm saying is if the, we're talking about-
The insurance, if they get money from-
Right.
Yeah.
And say, say then they owe us thirty thousand, would then the thirty thousand be counted as match or would the whole fifty-seven thousand be counted as match, even though we got some of it back?
At that point-
Just what we-
It would probably be remaining thirty, yeah.
Just what they owe us.
What they owe, okay, all right.
And definitely check, cause I thought, I, I know they said that they were gonna put some funds into this.
There was talk of that, they can notice they're not in the-
They don't have any funds.
In their proposal.
Well, they do, but once they use them, they'll have nothing.
Yeah.
And that's the problem.
And that may be, that may be their issue.
Can you verify that with Homer? Because when we met with him and a couple of them, you know, they, they were gonna put it in there, now all of a sudden they're coming with the entire thing.
On September twelfth.
September twelfth, yeah, that's-
Let's say, what?
Not next week, the two weeks away.
So do you want us to start working on the possibility of loan documents similar to what we've done in the past?
Yes. Yes.
Do you want any settlement to be paid back as part of the loan?
Yes.
Or are you allowing it to be?
Yeah, because if, and now could also be contingent upon if they're gonna put any money in, if they're gonna put the twenty-two thousand or something.
Then it could go towards you.
Then it, it could go back to them, but it all depends on what they get.
Do they not have any source of revenue?
Very limited.
Well, this, this goes back to what some view as poor agreements that basically gave away their revenue opportunities to other people. Um, right now, the airport board, there is no question, does not bring insufficient revenues to cover what they really should be doing. Um, and the county currently does not provide any additional stipend. And so capital maintenance and all that type of stuff is being neglected for the sake of just keeping operations running. And that's where we keep coming back and saying, you are reaching a critical point here where
We have to make it a center.
you gotta decide one way or the other, either you need to reduce the scope of that airport so that their revenues can cover their operations or you need to commit the county to improving it, whether it's improving it with the length of the runway that it is, but providing additional hangar space or whether it's extending the runway, those are conversations that need to be had soon. They had the eighty thousand dollars from that hangar blowover, they blew through that and blew through that, they went through that in, I think around three years. They're now operating, um, using the twenty thousand that got from the Kelly settlement, um, that money will be gone by the end of next year. So they're clearly in deficit spending here, so they're using one-time allocations to get themselves through.
And they, they, what is their source of revenue?
Uh, they get some hangar revenue, um, they get some fees.
Fuel.
User fees, they call them, um, everyone who keeps a plane that, well, actually, everyone who flies is supposed to pay. I believe right now they charge a monthly rate, um, and it's, it's fairly low, but, so they do have a few sources.
Could they increase that rate to cover?
Um, I mean, you always can, the question is whether people quit using it, you know.
It's still not gonna be enough, though.
Those, uh, those become questions. Um, the big, the big blow to them was when that hangar blew down. That was actually one of the nicer hangars, um, they lost roughly ten units worth of revenue on that hangar and had no way to replace it. And that, that really was the crux that started the downfall.
Well, their insurance wasn't enough to replace it, so they-
Right, they, they, thousand, about three hundred thousand dollar hangar, six hundred thousand.
Well, they're saying now it costs six hundred thousand to build a new hangar and they only got eighty thousand, so they use that as reserve money, but it's depleted, and that's the same thing with the money they have now. They have reserves, but it's not because they've been able to save money, that is from the lawsuit with Dale Kelly. And once that's gone, there's nothing coming in for it.
What, Kelly owe altogether, wasn't it a huge amount?
Mm-hmm, and they got twenty thousand.
I, I don't understand that. Why'd it go shit it down?
They did work with the prosecutor's office, but that was the agreed settlement.
Yeah. And then they don't own the, the flight school or any of that building, that's all owned by Mr. Bonner. And they don't, uh, they don't run the fuel, which is another good source of revenue, Mr. Bonner does that. But yet, we're responsible for the tanks. Something happens to them.
You're responsible for everything, I think.
Oh, yeah. See, these are, those discussions you're saying, we, we've gotta, I mean, I would encourage you and Kathleen to go out there and see, I mean, some of the hangars you walk in, you can see through the sky.
Oh, I've been out there, I know.
I know, Kathleen, if you haven't, I would encourage you to go out there, but concrete's heated, and any repairs, they're doing the repairs and I worry about the liability out there. Cause they're crawling on these tall roofs and, I mean, they're doing the best they can with their shoestring budget, but it's, it's to the point, it's just not enough anymore.
So we'll start working on at least the fuel tank looking.
Yeah.
I'm starting that as well, so that when they come out with an answer.
And, and who let us know, just verify that they are not gonna put-
I'll email Homer, I didn't see, his document was fourteen, fifteen pages.
Cause that may change the, the loan structure, if they get money back, how much, you know.
It looked to me as I read that, like they were asking for fifty-seven.
They could reimburse, that's what it looked like to me, too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you much.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, water resources at one.
So we'll recess?
Yes.
Yes. So you guys are kind of making up for lost time, don't very often see meetings in the afternoon.
Yeah.